You could expect that because through the course of maybe five years, even longer, Craig's doing better than that, and how often they get the septic drained and what have you. So you're going to have a higher concentration, that's to be expected. And then con, city most closely monitors each load. So we're put on here, you can get a bad load. So what does that look like? So we use microorganisms to treat waste, and we call it bugs, so I'll just call it bugs to make it simple. So those bugs, you could actually go up here and do an analysis of a shovel of dirt and pull that out, and if you did an analysis, that's exactly what we use, the bugs and microorganisms in there in our treatment. And how does that work? Well, we make the perfect environment for those bugs to survive in, we make them happy, and they love to eat, is what it boils down to. And that breaks down the waste. And you know, we've operated what we call SVRs for over 12 years. So we're very sensitive, we understand the operation very, very well, and it works very well for us. But we also understand that those are areas that we'd be concerned with, more so suspended solids, the makeup of the waste that we're talking, primarily, Craig, I believe you're talking residential waste, aren't you?
Yes, that's right.
So residential waste, you're going to get the higher ammonia components, total suspended solids, that'll be something that we'll do on our analysis. But you're going to have to monitor that when it comes in. And haulers know what they're hauling, I mean, they can tell when they're pulling it up out of the septic tank themselves, if they're getting bad loads and what have you. So we would have to do an analysis of the loads that come in, and it's what we call random sampling. Paperwork and billing, that's something that has to be done through manifested. Licensed hauler in the state of Georgia has to keep a manifest of where they picked it up and where they disposed of it, and we disvalidate that as well. Con responsibility for collections, obviously, we'd have to work the collection side of it. There's a stigma of septic. Ironically, we've got about 600 customers in the Lula area that we know are on septic. So it's a necessary evil, is what I would say too. If you don't have sewer hooked up to your house, you've got a septic tank, something's got to be done with. And it's a real challenge. I mean, there's no doubt in the whole metropolitan area, this is something we've been dealing with for a number of years. So obviously, a con is the tanker trucks, people don't like to see them in the neighborhood, and they certainly don't like to see them up and down the residential streets. We know that's an issue. Lula's waste treatment plant has excess capacity available, and that's the pro side of that equation. So we have, just for everybody's knowledge, council and for the audience, we have permitting to treat 385,000 gallons a day. We're currently averaging no more than about 120,000 gallons. So we have additional capacity available. You'll hear us talk that we assign a number, we wouldn't take any more septic than 30,000 gallons in a day, because what we want to do is be able to trickle that into the plant. Because again, you don't want to upset all the plant at one time. The septic itself can be toxic to the bugs, that's what you need to remember. You kill the bugs, and you have serious problems. And you know, it's all about making a perfect environment for those microorganisms to work in. But one of the problems we know that can happen with septic is, not so much with residential waste, but with all waste within the waste stream itself, it gets toxic. So it's actually, the pH levels get too high, and they just kill off the bugs immediately. So that's a big deal for us. I'm going, just going down the list. Revenue, so we figured at 12 cents a gallon, on current market rate, at 30,000 gallons, recognizes, I mean, it could be as much as $180,000 a month, that's a lot. But our cost is what we want to talk about. Because it's easy to add that up and say, well, this is worthwhile or what have you. First is operator labor, so we would have labor included. You don't want to let, you know, today, S&amp;S is proposing their use, but we have over 10 haulers in Hall County, and we've already heard from four other haulers that want to come as well. And so we have to, and I think there's three haulers in Banks County, you might know that better than I do.
I guess one too, if they weren't too.
Yeah, well, and I had heard from any of them, but what we want to be fair about is, is we do need to have sampling if you come in, and there's the wash down procedure, depending on where you receive it, because that's a big deal. At the waste treatment plant we operate today, I tell everybody, I mean, all council's been out there, you know how clean we keep that waste treatment plant. So, and not that you didn't want it ever to eat off the floors, but it is a clean environment, and it's a good working environment for us. So same thing would be expected of anything we take on septic hauls, our availability to wash down, our available ability to remove waste and not keep it on site. So we looked at operator costs, administrative labor, high strength wastewater treatment costs, and what we say high strength is primarily, if we're going to get into trouble, it's going to be on the ammonia side usually. And so we're going to have to supplement what we do chemical wise in the plant. And for those that have been in the plant, you know, I like to say we're a non-chemical plant. We use two chemicals, one to control the pH and the other to, actually what we call PAC, that actually adheres itself to phosphates, so we can remove those so they never go into the lake. Don't use chlorine. So that's a big deal for us. So this, we'd have to supplement chemicals if the ammonia were to get out of hand. The biggest problem, in a perfect world, we'd have a holding tank, and we could bring in septic waste, and then from there, slide it into the plant, and actually mix it with our waste stream, and because you could do a better control. And if you had to treat for ammonia or BODs that were out of hand, you could treat them in that, in that waste stream before it ever got into the plant. Wear and tear on equipment, so we're kind of proud of the way we operate the plant in regards to, from day one, we've operated that now for 12 years, and one of the compliments we get even during the audit, this last year's audit, is our consistency in operational cost. Because we know exactly what it costs to treat 1,000 gallons, whether it be chemical additives, which are the PAC and the AL that we use, or in the case of utilities. And it's surprising to us how well that works. So you're going to have that wear and tear, and you're going to have that cost, and we understand that. Lord, do we understand. Now the plant's over 10 years old, Garnet, Lamb, Matt, y'all have experienced that, you know, things get 10 years old, they get old, and they got to be replaced. So that's almost an expectation of what we do in the operation of the plant. So we think our net cost, the monthly revenue, we think our net cost alone is 50,000, so that would leave you 57,000. And that's assuming you're taking 30,000 gallons a day. Then what's the con, the hassle factor? Because what we operate now, we don't have that issue. We don't have to put 20 hours a week towards receiving septic. So that's something to bear in mind as well. And you're going to have to have some skilled labor. You need to have somebody there, from our staff perspective, we're fine with any of the three that we have right now, that they understand what they're getting. We just don't want to load up septic truck, they want to understand what they can do, chemical analysis, you can actually do some of that right on hand. You can check pH immediately, before the tank unloads. But those are the type thing, you just not, can't give it to the running mill guy. It's got to be somebody who's a student, familiar with it. Another pro on this would be low strength equal to regular sewage, screening solids removed. This is assuming that we did a bar screen, similar to what he's proposed. And if you remember, when we talked to you about this, there's a company called Rev, and I'm going to give you some information on that. And they do, they remove all the solids, and they bar screen it, and then all you get is the waste stream, the liquid waste stream itself. So we're going to look at it from that perspective. If you looked first, it's just we're receiving everything. So again, you get low strength because, one, you're screening off all the waste that's, the solids that are in there, those are just a magnet for contaminants. And if you want to know where the smell comes from, a lot of it comes from there. Because, I mean, there's no doubt, you can come up to our bar screen, and that's the only place in the whole plant you're ever going to smell anything. And of course, we put that under aeration, so we eliminate that almost immediately. We don't use any chemical fills to garnish the smell that comes off that. But, you know, if you're going to smell it, it's going to be head worse. Low BOD and very low total suspended solids, again, because we're removing those foreign objects that are in the waste stream. Can have high ammonia, it's just, it comes almost with septic. I mean, to the extent, Craig could probably speak to that better, like I said, if you pump your septic tank every five years, maybe it's not as bad, but I'm sure that they encounter folks that, they don't pump their septic tank until it's slap full to the brink. And I know some of those folks, and they don't know any better, and it's just, we ought, we ought to do a better job of getting folks to do that regularly, because our system will last longer. Another pro in the paperwork and billing by Rev, if we took that under a private contractor, they'd be responsible for that, we'd only, we'd only be responsible for receiving the waste stream, the liquid waste stream. So all that, as far as responsibility and keeping the permits intact and what have you, and the disposals, that would be all back on them. Like I said, Rev Solutions is responsible for the collections, that's the dollar amount. You're still not going to get away that stigma of septic, I mean, you're just not. But it's a necessary evil for those that just don't want to believe it or not, wait till your toilet backs up, and you call companies like in S&amp;S, you're glad that they're in the neighborhood. And then, we still, as a pro, we have the excess capacity available. The revenue stream is something we'd want to talk about, because here, instead of taking 12 cents, we'd only get one cent, but we're only, we're actually limiting the amount. So one cent's a number we used, I don't know if that's viable or not, to be something that council would want to weigh out as far as fee structure. So the cost monthly, we still have labor in it. But our labor would be reduced to about two hours per week, because we're going to validate that Rev would be doing their work in the way they're supposed to do it. And then possible treatment costs based on the ammonia component, if we had to add and treat on chemical side, we estimate that'd be about $2,000. And then, so total cost monthly would be about $2,400. Monthly revenue estimated, we make about $8,400. So what's the pro on that? It's no hassle, because we're not having to worry about the problems that cause us, the BODs, the total suspended solids. The ammonia, we'd have to deal with nonetheless. So from our perspective, we know how well our operations run now. And, you know, we've never had a violation. We've had a couple of times that things have been upset, but never went out of compliance. As a matter of fact, y'all are very familiar, you know what our requirements are in the state of Georgia, and they're very strict. And we by far exceed what their expectations. I'm very proud of that. And so first and foremost, our biggest concern was, we never want to get out of compliance issue. Second overall is, we understand that the marketplace puts a demand on septic. It's not something that we can make go away. And interestingly enough, and Craig may want to speak to this later, the problem is, you said you're hauling to Cornelia now?
Yes, if we can, yes.
If you can. So the problem is, is they have a limit on what they take a day? Is that why there's a limit, or?
I don't know.
Because I understood they weren't taking any.
I'm sorry?
I understood they weren't taking any right now.
They just started back in August.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, you know, in Banks County, see, for Banks County, for us, the sludge or the waste and what have you, they won't take ours. You know, as a matter of fact, y'all need to remember that we actually know that sludge costs us about $90 a ton to remove, plus shipping. The city of Gainesville and Flowery Branch, everybody's running into this, they're at 140 a ton, plus shipping, and they're shipping to Alabama. But the capacities are that much more, and the volume's that much more. So we're fortunate where we are right now, we don't want to upset what we're doing there, because we've got kind of trade off with the vendor we're using right now. But the bigger issue for us is, again, is making sure that we understand, one, can we provide the service, and can we control and manage the service? And it's a difficult task when, if we were to deal with one hauler, it'd be easier control when you're open to the free marketplace. That would almost be impossible to do unless you had someone that's in violation, I guess you could rule them out then. But there's a lot of policy and procedure we would have to adopt if we were to go forward with this. The first and foremost is probably deciding what's going to be your best avenue, if you want to go forward. And so I've got a couple more sheets that we need to go over. The first one would be discharge locations. So...
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
They don't risk the other option, the Rev Solutions.
Right.
You get the call, that's what happens.
No, they pay us. That $8,400 would be bank money, revenue.
You can handle a little problem?
Well, but they would almost assure, they would actually give us pretty close to household waste stream on theirs. And they use a similar system, it's a little bit more complex. As a matter of fact, their system, where Craig had talked about being able to use a bar screen, we'd remove that, it's what we call super nitrates. We'd actually skim off the super nitrates. In a room about this size would be the required treatment area to do what a company like Rev would do. So...
Can I see more?
Please. In just a second, just make notes what you want to talk about. So let's talk about the discharge locations, because we've looked at what options are available, and Cobb Street, Sewer Pond, you see that from a staff perspective, we're saying that's not suitable. There's no power. You got to have the availability for wash down and cleanup, truck traffic, you know, I think we've got about 20 homes on Cobb Street that would have to be loaded with septic trucks, and then the key, you know, we use gravel access down there. We only go to the, as a matter of fact, we go to the pond maybe twice a week, unless we have a rain event, and then we're down there more often than that. I said no wash down facilities present, and no staff on hand. This, if you want assurance, this is one of those, you inspect what you expect. You have to have staff available when you're receiving septic, from our perspective. Waste water treatment plant, not suitable. It actually doesn't have all the demise that Cobb Street does. Truck traffic through a facility is going to be the same problem, you know, everybody recognizes. And then, no wash down facilities present. So where, that plant would be the most optimum place. We don't have a receiving station that would take it, is what it boils down to. So that would be a capital cost that we'd have to experience. But we have the staff right there. So that's probably a more suitable location, but the truck traffic's going to be our nightmare. I mean, there's no question about that. And I'll just remind you that most people in Magnolia Station, which we're, you know, the waste treatment plant's on the backside of that, most people don't even know that we're there. You know, we have trucks in and out every day, with two trucks go in, if you count me, I'm three. So we're, you know, I mean, just nobody even knows we're there, and we're treating, you know, millions of gallons of sewer. So from that standpoint, you start bringing the trucks in, that would probably be a problem for us. The Mountain View well location and lift station, I've actually given you a diagram on that, similar to what Craig showed you. Same thing, truck traffic could be an issue. Plus, we, we control, we access that property off of an easement. And I'll just use this, because you've got it up right here. This is the easement that we have, and this is all gravel that comes down through here. This is actually the property we control back here. So we have well location, lift station, pump station for sewer, and then we have a well treatment facility that's on there. Well, the first thing I'm going to tell you is, is that lift station wasn't designed to receive septic. So again, if we were to go there, you'd want to improve that site so you could do wash down along that way. Plus, I'm not worried about the volume at this point, but at 30,000 gallons a day, we probably want to look at that pretty close. Remember how we build waste treatment, our lift stations or any components? Everything's redundant. We don't have one pump, we have two, in a lot of cases, we have three. That particular lift station doesn't have backup generators on it, and that would be a worry as it would be for anything. So is it the most ideal? Well, again, we'd have to make improvements on the property to receive it. The idea of storing sludge or any of the skimmings off of it in a dumpster is never a good idea. That's all I can tell you. Doesn't surprise me that Cornelia hauls, now, Cornelia deals with a lot of industrial waste, hauls it more so than anything else. So it doesn't surprise me at all that they haul that much a day. Two trucks are a little bit more than I expected, but I mean, it doesn't surprise me, because that is a component that you're going to get some aroma from, that's the nicest way I can say poop smells, but anyway. But the other side on that is, again, no staff on hand. So how would we look at that, if that's the best? And then, of course, there's new receiving locations. You know, 14 years ago, when we designed the waste treatment plant, we actually thought seriously about taking on septic there. And we thought about receiving, or making a receiving station. And our biggest concern was the same concern that everybody else in waste management has. And that is, you don't want to upset your facilities and what have you, you don't want, but it is a problem for a removal of septic. I mean, it's a metropolitan Atlanta problem. There's just not enough places for the haulers to take it. Craig made a couple remarks that I want to ask on in a minute, but if you look at these locations that I've given you here, we have 2.34 acres at that location. We do have a well site, I'm not worried about the well site and contamination there, because we'd never let it get that bad. Trust me, the way we operate everything, if there's spillage, it never stays on the ground. But I am worried about the access, because the easement access, there's a gentleman has a, you actually met, a gentleman, Hudson River, he actually owns the property on the backside of that, is trying to develop that property back in there. It's actually on the market now for sale. And so we'd be using his easement off of that. And we want to have conversation with him, he was comfortable with our easement access off that, because he's wanting to sell the other 37 acres that are behind it, behind the 2.3 acres that we have. So that would be a little bit of concern on our part. Any questions as far as location? I can't find another location. I wish I could, I wish I could tell you that, you know, I just, I know the system well, it's just hidden in a perfect location. And we could take it to the plant without anybody knowing we were taking the plant in a perfect world. So, here's, I'm going to give you this, this is on Rev Solutions, this is the company. I have no affiliation with those, for anybody that wants to know. I am familiar with what they do, because they were able to take advantage of some of the problems that John Halsey set up in White County, and took some of the business that he couldn't take. So, and this is a growing industry, isn't it Craig? Because we got to figure out how we're going to get rid of septic. So this is just their sales brochure. That is one of two companies that I know that we might be able to contract with, where it'd be hands for. All we're doing is taking the waste stream, we're not taking the solids, we're not taking the BODs. Ammonia could still be the only other issue to look at. The other side of this is, in septic's receiving, is you got to have policy and procedure. Now I have a 57 plate sewer use ordinance that covers how, which adopted years ago, it covers how waste comes in, and the load limits that are allowed on it. But we do not deal with septic, that was intentional, but we didn't do it. So that would be something you would probably amend in this document. And I remind you, this is the same document that we've used where we fined a developer $15,000 last month. So we use this document because it's got the teeth in it needs. We, that doesn't cover the septic hauler. So at a minimum, if you asked me today what we need to do, policy and procedure, we would probably limit hours of operation, the loads, we'd probably get a little bit more into the depth of what we're going to do with ammonia, and how we're going to sample on loads and what have you. We better understand what the lab analysis would be. Probably, if I was to take septic today, the first thing we would treat, we would test for is just pH, because that'll be, give us an indication of whether or not we're running too high, and that would offset the bug populations. Second, we'd take a sample, and we'd take it back to the lab and do an analysis there. And probably, we'd send off random samples to the state for a full analysis, so we understand that everybody's following their Ps and Qs. It's one of those things, you inspect what you expect. It's exactly how we've been successful with what we do with waste stream right now. Construction of the facility, obviously, if you take it upon yourselves, if you do it similar to what Craig had said, you know, there's the option of the hauler itself, I guess, providing that service, or the city providing that service. If we're going to be responsible, I'd rather us wrap our arms around it and do it right the first time, rather than be dependent on a contractor, you know, the hauler himself. No disrespect to Craig, so I, but I can say this, you don't want the fox watching the hen house, is what it boils down to. Because it's not just Craig, we're opening this up for everybody else. And then, so the construction of the facility and what have you, if we took that on, what he did there is, what we took the super nitrates, and we'd pull those off. And so we separate that from the solid waste stream. What does that mean to y'all? It means that the ammonia components, we can store in a separate tank, and we can trickle those into the plant. That would be the perfect world. And then the regular waste stream could go straight on through the pump station, because we're going to have a lot of mix. That actual pump station, Mountain View, mixes with one other pump station already. So we'd have that deluge that would allow that. The fee schedule, you know, we, they suggested numbers, we suggested numbers, that's something we'd want to nail down. The idea that this can be a moneymaker, I don't think should be our motivation. I think our motivation should be, one, we certainly cover costs, two, we provide the public service that is becoming hard to find. But at the same time, you know, all you need is to upset that plant one time, and I will promise you, it doesn't matter how much money you bring in a year, it won't be worthwhile. The problem, if you upset a plant, is, it's not like you can flip the switch. If tomorrow I smell ammonia, that smell's going to stay with us for about a week before we can actually resolve that problem. So what that means is, if ammonia gets to be a problem, I'm going to bore you all to death. There's ammonia in a liquid form, there's ammonia in a gas form, that we actually off gas during the process. You never smell it, because we control the off gas on it. You get where the ammonia concentrate's too high, you won't control anything. And everybody and their brother will smell it. And it's unfortunate, it comes with the territory. But it's not like you can flip a switch and make it go away. So, I mean, that's my biggest concern of all, especially because of how well we run the operations right now. So, and then there's bonding of septic haulers. That would be something we'd want to consider. It's going to be hard unless we do the analysis, what have you, to hold somebody hostage. But very similar to what we did with the developer, where we fined them $15,000, we ought to have a bonding mechanism that assures the haulers of doing what they're supposed to do, within the guidelines of the permit. And that's a little bit different approach, but it's almost an assurance. And what you want to do is, you want to make it painful for them, to where they can't afford it for that bond to be pulled. Because we don't want to pull it. It's worst case scenario. And then, of course, the budget amendment, because you're going to have expenses. So I don't think everybody realizes that we'd have labor costs in this, but you inspect what you expect. And just, because every one of y'all familiar with what a great operation we run right now, the waste treatment facilities that we have, you want to assure that's the minimum standard that we have, and at no time do you put yourself at risk. So, a couple more points I'd like to go over. We talked about, you know, is this an opportunity for the, for revenue to be enhanced? Sure, under the right circumstances, it is. And I think this is one of those, I think Denise, you and I talked about maybe a month or so back. This is a risk assessment, is really what it boils down to. What can you afford versus what can you do? Well, worst case scenario, you upset the plant, it's not worthwhile at all. But if you can put the right guidelines in there, and the right is sometimes painful, right might be that you have to have a security bond that makes sure that they do what they're supposed to do, and heaven forbid they haven't paid off on it, because they can be rather expensive. But a couple of comments that have been made along the way that I wanted to cover. So basically, there's three ways that we're looking on how we treat it. One, we take everything, do everything. Two, you let a septic hauler put in a system like this, and they maintain it and operate it. And then we just get that static load, because the BODs and the suspended solids, total suspended solids, those need to be dealt with, especially with septic. And then last but not least, you hire a private contractor, like I And then last but not least, you hire a private contractor, like I said, with Rev Solutions, uh, and see what opportunity might be there. And then, uh, you know, we have, gotta understand, there's gonna be a capital expense. If we do receiving at, uh, the Mountain View, depending if you go with a private contractor, like I said, they need a footprint about the size of this room. And then you'd have to enhance that with, uh, wash down capabilities and, uh, storage. You know, I'm not, I'm just not a proponent of storing, uh, uh, the solids at any facility. Unless we, you know, we store them at our facility out there, but we've got a controlled atmosphere that we do that with. But that would be a possibility that you could haul off. Uh, let's see. Contract screener, you know, you'd have to enter into an agreement with them. They're gonna make an investment, you're probably looking at. I'd say contracted services because the dollar amount investment, um, you're probably, at a minimum, probably three to five years' contract availability. Cause they've gotta make the capital investment, that's really what you cover on that side. Uh, where I wish we had a better location than Mountain View, I can't find one. That's not an endorsement on the one we're talking about, it's just, uh, there's just not a perfect world. Some of the in-county treatments, you gotta understand what, so our, our treatment facility is called an SVR, sequential batch reactor. So it's different from what we call an activated sludge plant. So, I mean, y'all have been there, you don't smell it. And that's intentional, it's because the technology has allowed us to drive that so well that we can operate so well. So when you compare apples to apples, if you go to an activated sludge plant, you're gonna know the difference, you're gonna smell the difference when you get on the ground. You're gonna smell the difference when you get out of the car. To expect any different for a septic hauling thirty thousand gallons, you know, I'd probably be trying to pull a wool over your eyes. And that's, I'm doing, just try to do it just the opposite of that. So the other thing that is important to remember is, is, you know, and I'm not picking on you Craig, the statement was made, well, look how much more money we get versus what we charge for the average household waste stream. So we charge right at about five dollars, that's what the numbers are going to, per thousand to treat. Uh, that plus the base rate. And of course, he'd pay considerably more than that. But you gotta remember, it's twenty-five times more stringent than just regular household waste. If, if you come to the plant with me, and you all grow up in the country, because we're very proud of that facility. And I showed you what the actual waste stream is. It's not like you see, uh, some elements you see flowing down the toilet all day long. It, there's such a mix that you just don't see that. So what questions might you have of me? I know Margaret, you're dying to ask me a question. I can, I can look at you and tell.
Crap.
See, you said a waste, waste treatment plant, we have some sort of mechanism that controls the smell.
No, we don't, we, we actually aerate. So what happens is it comes in, uh, in, we use, we have twelve different treatment processes. When we use the bar spring to begin with, and that's gonna improve, that's gonna, uh, remove the solids and what have you. Then it goes into a grit chamber, that removes more of the waste stream element that, what we call the blue side of the equation. Then it goes into the basin, and in the basin, there's six treatment processes that take place in there. So, uh, we make, that's what we call a perfect environment. Uh, when we talk about microorganisms or the bugs, we make them fat and happy. When bugs are fat and happy, uh, that means they eat well, which they eat waste. Uh, fat and happy eat well, they love to reproduce. And what happens after, you're fat, happy, love to reproduce, you die. So we remove all, it's just a perfect environment. Aeration is part of the equation. A lot of plants, uh, they use aeration to offset their off-gassing and what have you. Where we don't, you only see our blowers run when they're necessary. We're actually watching, uh, what we call the dissolved oxygen content, again, enhancing that value, uh, where the treatment takes place. In those six processes that take place in each one of the SVRs, from there, uh, we take off the top, we take off the bottom. The bottom is the sludge, goes into the digester. The top goes to the FEB, that's where we add PAC, uh, which is the magnet that we use to help us remove phosphorus, which is what, if you wanna know what destroys lakes, is the phosphorus component. So that helps us, uh, adhere to the phosphorus. Then we send it through the, uh, uh, clarifier. And from there, we actually are pulling the bottom off. That's another process, we, we come off the top, uh, with the waste stream and that goes into the, uh, sand filters. From the sand filters, we go down to the UV contact chamber. And from there, then we do aeration at the last. So, you know, anybody who hadn't seen our operations, let me know. We, because we're very proud of it. As a matter of fact, we think we've removed about ninety-eight percent of all pollutants. I can tell you, I can assure you of this. What we actually discharge, uh, into the tributary to the Chattahoochee River is far cleaner than anything that's flowing down the river on Sunday. And that's true, uh, probably, uh, Gainesville, uh, coming, Versailles County now has a facility, and the city of Flowering. Cause we're the only ones, they're so stringent on us that discharge into Lake Lanier, uh, more so than anybody below them. They don't have, oh, Gwinnett County, I'd be wrong if I didn't mention Gwinnett County, because they actually discharge in Lanier as well. What other questions might you have?
What's Gainesville do for their, it smells a long ways off.
So they have, uh, so they have activated sludge plants and they have SVR. So they have more than one plant. So that's the problem that they're encountering. So activated sludge plants, uh, were around forty years ago. And, uh, same thing, you take the microorganisms, you let them work. But that's actually what we call a bleed plant, plus they can put feed plant. And we don't have to do that. It's the technology that we use, uh, it's been around for a while, it's just been, it hadn't been affordable. That's how we were able to build the facility we have now, is the cost has come down so much. So it's a lot easier, even back twelve years ago, we struggled with building an activated sludge plant because of the cheaper alternative and they last forty years versus building an SVR plant, uh, that's gonna be far more expense. We were right in this regard, but far less than operational cost. So, and the difference is for us is almost three to one. For every employee that we have in an activated sludge plant, you'd have three additions to that. So you can see where the cost starts getting, plus utility costs. They run their blowers all the time. We run our blowers, only when we need them. And even then, y'all know this, we don't run the blowers at a hundred percent. We run blowers at fifty-six percent. So, so everything about what we do is different than what, say, Gainesville has to do with theirs. It's just older technology. The, uh, city of Cornelia, it's a great operation. They, they do a great job, but they use activated sludge. But it's so far removed that you're not gonna smell it. But they do, I, I never criticize them, they do a great job up there for what they have to work with.
All right, the construction of the facility, what kind of cost are we looking at there?
So again, if we manage that against, uh, thirty thousand gallons a day, we would actually size that. So I haven't worked the cost yet, because I wanna know is that the, the direction you wanna go. But I can tell you that you're gonna be probably in excess of sixty thousand dollars. Mainly because we're not gonna have, uh, we might be able to find a bar spring similar to what they've had, larger in size probably. It, all, for us, it's all about maintenance and upkeep. So it's gotta be able to be washed down, maintain it. So we might be able to find that, or we might construct it onsite. It'd be something you'd have to value.
If we went with this company?
We went with that company, we would not have any capital expense at all.
Okay.
But you can see the dollar amount significantly different.
If we go with him, then what's our cost on facility? And it all, if we let him, if we let him?
If we went with companies like SNS?
Yeah, if we let them do that, what's the facility?
We would have all the capital expense and the operational cost.
All right, but we, facility cost?
So we know, uh, what the facility cost would be a minimum of, uh, it, you know, again, building a receiving station, similar like we're talking, you know, that's gonna be around sixty thousand. Yep, so you got sixty thousand dollars in capital cost. I'd love to be wrong about that number. And then you've got fifty thousand dollars in cost, uh, with regards to, uh, against your revenue.
Is Rev Solutions, you got a place that he can actually dump it to?
Yeah, they have one up in, uh, they have one in Blairsville.
Yeah.
They just opened.
Not necessarily close.
I can't, I can't dump there, that don't make sense. They just opened up about three weeks ago. Guys named Carlos.
And they're also looking at, I think they've got two other locations that they're looking to make improvements on.
They were trying to get started in Gainesville, but they couldn't, uh, get any property.
Yeah, I mean, you know, that's the problem. I mean, that's why Blairsville is probably the perfect location because it's quite a distance, but see the demand for the market, it's become. When we've got waste treatment plants that are having to haul their sludge to Alabama, you can see what the problem is. Of course, it's on a much larger scale. But he is lucky, if Banks County will take theirs, I'm gonna tell you, sweetheart of a deal.
I see the description of one of these numbers here too. Craig?
Yeah.
You said that twenty-nine seventy is actually nine thousand gallon load per, per load.
Yeah, so the tankers have changed, they, they had multiple tankers. They have averaged between eight and nine thousand gallons.
Well, what I figured out, there's nowhere here thirty thousand gallons a day.
Oh, no, that's, that's just me, yeah.
So you're going, rock.
Yeah, we're, we're the ones who instituted a cap at thirty thousand. But we didn't have that.
Tip set, right, three gallons per gallon?
Yeah, so tip, yeah, so an average day about three, three, uh, two truckloads, so it'd be about four thousand gallons too. You guys are permitted for three hundred eighty-five thousand, so you'd be looking at like one percent, you know, of your daily, a lot of the amount.
So, let me tell you an element that we haven't talked about, uh, that I just want y'all to be aware of it. So we sell capacity, y'all know that. So we sell capacity now, what we call residential equivalents of five thousand gallons, or excuse me, of, uh, two hundred and forty gallons a day. That wrote, that costs five thousand dollars for a property owner. The Magnolia Station, Waterford Glen, they pay five thousand dollars for capacity components. We're not talking about a capacity kind of here. And I can tell you that when we built the plant, we knew exactly what capacity components are. You know, one of the things we're really proud of is we understand the operational and the capital components. And it's about twelve dollars a gallon. So you're buying, not only are you treating capacity, but you're also buying capacity in stores. Three hundred eighty-five thousand gallons sounds like a lot. And one percent was a good rationale for Craig to bring up from that. But that's a capacity, once you give it away, we've already paid for it from a capital standpoint. That is not in any of your figures. So that's something you may or may not want to weigh onto. And it'd be something you wanna weigh with each of your, uh, your suppliers. Cause there, now you can do that one or two ways. You can put that on the front end, so what they pay in their fees, which is what I'd suggest. And so that way you don't have a long-term obligation if they don't do what they're supposed to do. Or you put a, a one-time upfront cost, which is what we do with the house. Well, the house isn't going anywhere, that's what it boils down from that standpoint. So Craig, I'm gonna pick on you, but I want everybody to understand, only because he's familiar with the industry. So an example would be, when I say I wanna pick on you, I try not to make these too hard. So we're trying to understand, so you gave us some numbers which were around a hundred twenty-nine thousand. I've got it there, I can pull up the number. So, right, so that was, so tell me about, how does that compare with what you're paying Cornelia for right now?
So Cornelia, if you pump and dispose within Habersham County, so that's cheaper.
Yeah, they give you a cut, right?
Yeah, no, no.
No?
Those numbers I provided to you were cheaper than Habersham County, or Cornelia, excuse me. So in Cornelia, if you pump and dispose in Habersham County, it's twenty-one cents per gallon. But if you pump the surrounding counties, like why, they don't accept Hall County waste, like they're not, isn't that a shame? So Habersham, Cornelia doesn't accept Hall County. They will accept Banks, Stevens, White, Raven, and Towns County. And if you pump in those counties and dispose, it's twenty-five cents a gallon.
Okay, good. So, you know, I mean, those are the things we're just learning. So, uh, you talked about your, your tanks and, uh, your trucks themselves, those are four thousand gallon tanks?
No, sir.
Nope?
Two thousand.
Two thousand, I'm sorry. I, I just read two thousand, I said four thousand, didn't I? All right, so, uh, the arrangement you have with Banks County, is that where you're taking your sludge, or how's that work?
No, so the arrangement we had, we were only, it was a special situation. We have a Banks County, we were pumping their school system. So we pumped the school system and we disposed in Banks County.
Okay, okay.
However, any other time during the year, we're not allowed to dump there.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, and they have limited facilities.
They do, and that, you know, they just, the racetrack.
Yeah, they're building a new mess right now, so good for them. Uh, when I say they're building a new mess, I'm sincere. Everybody needs to update, you know, we're fortunate to be in the position we are because this is, we're gonna, we're gonna become a bigger and bigger problem. And the technology's out there that we can do a better job of it. So give me an idea about when you were doing with LH Farms, what were you paying with that?
Fifteen cents a gallon. And it went, uh, you know, when it first started, it was like fourteen cents a gallon. Then it went up to fifteen, I think when they closed, we were up to eighteen cents a gallon.
I'd heard they went as much as twenty-one. So it's interesting, because when we looked at this fourteen years ago, you know, they were in business and we were trying to understand, well, what can we afford? And could we make this to where it paid for itself and, you know, it didn't eliminate it? So, uh, eighteen was the top that you ended up doing, of course, now.
Other companies may have paid more, but I mean, I was with them for a while, so, you know.
Yeah, so, and what he's talking about with LH Farms, so you may have heard a lot about that. They actually took their solids and injected them into the soils. If you hadn't heard about that in White County. Uh, EPD, uh, somewhat permitted them, but they actually, the problem they run into now is all that's being controlled now by the Department of Agriculture. And they're very limited for what they can use. And I'm gonna tell you, so they should be, about what you can do and where you can do it. But we've gotta come up with a solution that works best for everybody. I don't know that we're the perfect solution, I can tell you that. Some of these concerns that you're gonna hear from the public, you know, clearly from my perspective, are justified. Uh, if we need to be worried about, uh, the smell and those issues, we should be worried about it. And, and you know, it's, uh, in the last twelve years in our operations, we are very proud of what we've been able to do with what we've got to work with. And we're looking forward to how much more capacity we can bring on and not upset that out of the car. So, but the problem for us is just like we said, we've got, we know we've got six hundred homes in just the Lula area that are on septic. And that's a problem. What do you charge for a thousand gallon tank now for treatment?
Right now, five seventy-five.
Five seventy-five.
For a thousand gallon, yeah.
Ten years ago, what was that price?
What, three seventy, three fifties or something?
Two eighty, yeah.
I mean, you know, so, I mean, it tells you the demand on the marketplace is a profit. So much so that our concern is, uh, we actually watch for haulers to come in and dump on us. And it happened, I, I won't tell you that it doesn't. It's almost impossible to catch them unless you catch them in the act right out of manhole. But we can tell when it comes into the plant, we can see our pH spikes, those type of things. Uh, and it's not just us. I mean, with all the other waste treatment facilities, we're all watching the same thing because of the demand on the market. If you have no place to go, what are you gonna do? I mean, that's the problem. So the industry needs to be regulated, there's no doubt about that. But you can't regulate them out of business. So, uh, any more questions for me?
Is there another way to store it without using a dumpster?
We can haul off immediately. I can haul off immediately. To be, if we, if that was the issue, I mean, I have certain, I have dump trucks, I have, uh, dump trailers, whatever. We could immediately get rid of the suspended solids. If that was, if that was the breaking point, then yes, we could do that.
For one load of garbage, you seen that guy, dump that truck, it's a wheelbarrow there.
Yeah.
So you've got less than a wheelbarrow full each truckload, maximum. And that can, we can haul it out, we got a dump truck looking at it out daily, or that does.
If that was the breaking point.
Those solids are pulling out, they're not really helping, are they? No, but, well, it's, the solids, it's wet.
I would disagree.
It depends, I mean, I'm not gonna say, I'm not.
Yeah, but you pull, pull a paper and, uh, stick.
Most of it's like, yeah, so it's like.
It's mainly feminine products.
Feminine product, handy wipes, stuff like that.
I can say that I've had them pump trucks sitting on my property ever since Jay, I'm doing, how long has the pump trucks been there? Five, six years? And I've never had a neighbor complain. And believe me, if I smelled it, somebody's gonna hear about it.
Yeah, they do a good job.
And they sit right there, people come and back my driveway.
I'll steal the side, I can, I can handle it.
And they sure, right on top of it, you cannot smell it.
We try to, I, I, there's obviously a stigma like you said, there's no way of getting around it. But, you know, we try to keep our equipment clean and take it, I don't want, you know, residents complaining about, you know.
Well, thirty years ago, when I came to Luga, to pump the septic plant, well, that is true. You could smell it on a summer, summer day.
Is there aeration? Well, that's, I can answer Matt's question, so how do you know how far it'll smell? It all has to do with humidity. It all has to do with humidity. It really does. And what we call super nates and what have you, we can tell when the humidity's a little bit different, even at our own plant. But, I mean, you're just not gonna get that septic. What other questions? Oh, back to your question about storage. So, in the perfect world, you would have a receiving station that could store as much as thirty thousand gallons, and then you would trickle that into a regular waste stream. Because then you're not, you, one, you can do an analysis of what you've received. And we do that every day. We do that on the way, we took, well, we have a twenty-four hour sampler that samples coming in, so we know if we're getting hit or struck by a high pH element. So, in the perfect world, you'd have thirty thousand gallon tank, which a lot of plants that were designed to take septic do, not thirty thousand, but they have a receiving station. So, that way, you can trickle that in. But again, that drives expense, that's what boils down to.
In Cornelia, just as we talk about it a lot, you just dump straight into the stream. However, that's not the perfect way, but that's just how they're...
Yeah, and the other thing is, look at their volume.
Yeah.
So, their volumes considerably are far more than what we treat.
With that, that would be on top of the sixty thousand.
Yes.
Okay.
We would, in the sixty thousand, we'd have two tanks there. One would be what we call recapture tank, that we could send back through. The other one would be for the super nitrates, because we know that's where the problem child's gonna be. We know that's gonna be the most...
So, that would be included in this price?
That being the sixty thousand, but to store thirty thousand would be an additional cost.
Addition, so roughly off the top of my head.
I, you know, I don't know. I mean, it's something, if we wanna go down that road, I think...
I'm just trying to break costs down here.
So, in fact, no, in fairness to y'all, that's something we probably can get a number. The question is, do we wanna make that expense? Do we wanna experience the labor? Do we wanna experience the chemical additives? The utility cost and the wear and tear? Or do you wanna contract that out? Or do you wanna rely on the septic haulers to self-regulate?
Right, well, I was just trying to use numbers so I could make it.
I got you. You know, if you're gonna pull a number, I mean...
I meant this roughly, I meant...
I could be saving, say, for a hundred thousand dollars. But, and I wanna be wrong about that. I wanna say it's less than. My concern about Mountain View is the access point off that easement. I don't think Mr. Turk will be a happy camper. You know, now, I haven't had that conversation. What I hope will happen in the next couple of weeks is y'all can start giving me some direction, be able to say, let's do a better evaluation of the capital cost. Let's make sure that if we're gonna use Mountain View, is that gonna be accessible to the surrounding property owner?
And if we use that, then we'll have to do something with the easement too, right?
Well, the easement right now, he's gonna wanna make improvements on that. He'd probably want us to make, participate in those improvements. But we need to have that conversation. I'm sorry.
There goes more money out of septic.
Right, that's why I'm asking that.
So, but I can tell you, you know, he's bargaining it now, so in the perfect world, he'll flip that property to somebody else, and I understand they have those obligations. We don't have any right now to improve.
I wonder if you, well, I'd ask Pickle in Mountain View, how many wants to come in their area?
Two of them.
I don't think you'll...
I don't know anybody that would.
I don't either.
I got a question about the property that's under, or out of contract. If we do, especially if it's nearby next door to it, and it hinders the sale of the property, is there a liability to the city on that?
So, it's funny you bring that up, because we run into that exact scenario, where, you know, what you can imagine, when we built the waste treatment facility over there, everybody and their brother, and of course, we were reassuring that we could build a facility. Matter of fact, we call it a water reclamation facility, we don't call it a wastewater treatment plant. But the truth of the matter is, is everybody has that concern. We can be assured because of the standards we set, what we can do with that. You need to do the same type of standards if you're gonna do that to receive a septic, nonetheless. And if it would cause what we call scrubber, that would scrub up smells, I don't think scrubbers work. As a matter of fact, who in the room likes Febreeze? I'm not one of those fans. So, but that's exactly what you do, you're just adding this to it, to what we call scrub the air. Now, on the discharge, the better way is to capture it and don't let the air get out. You don't allow, you don't allow the ammonia to actually off-gas.
Yes?
I think a concern, in relation to this, 'cause I live in this subdivision, is by looking for a home to live in, and I go into it and I see sewage trucks coming in and out. I'm pretty sure that would, maybe you wanna go somewhere else.
Go down the bayou.
Oh, they're gonna down the bayou, that would kinda deter people. It would deter me.
And I wanna, when y'all say y'all are scared about the traffic coming in and out with how many trucks it is, it would literally be, like with our company, it would be one truck, is all it would be. It wouldn't be...
Then he said they were gonna go to all...
To all companies?
Yeah.
Yeah, but for us, that would only be, I'm, I'm, right now, for the past seven months, I'm only gonna drive to pump those. Like, even when I say when I come in there and I pump the, like, the subdivisions in there, most of the time, have you ever seen me in there?
Well, we worked during the day.
Yeah, so, yeah, most of the time, like what we're doing, like, we wouldn't be in when y'all were at work, and then when y'all come home, we wouldn't be nowhere.
Yeah, I wanna have my subdivision, I can live there comfortably, I don't want to stay. I wanna be able to enjoy, I like being outside. I'm an outdoor person.
The problem is, we don't have growth, I'm too gone with the plants.
Everybody's not gone, it's like...
Your subdivision?
Everybody in that subdivision, all on the second, none of y'all are on city sewer.
Yeah.
Like, we have to come in, or eventually the plant or house...
Okay, can I get you to get that thing back on with the machine? Let me explain to him something, over here with the machine that you're gonna dump in. Okay, I work with his grandfather, I work with his daddy, I work with his uncle. I know crap when you bring it in on these trucks. And I've done it a long time. Let me look.
Did you finish your first Russian council discussion?
I have to keep this mental down.
Where's the discussion?
When he dumps into this little machine that they got going on here, you take mulch, you take solids, separate them, stir them up, put them in the truck, haul them out, at his expense.
I thought you said he wasn't doing that. That's what we were saying with that, the dumpsters are just hours, no, we're not gonna...
Okay, you gotta take mulch.
I am, I don't see them.
You gotta take mulch and your solids, as they dump them in, you take it over here and you mulch it up, just like White County did. You know, make it rid of your trash, okay?
So, you put more trash in, you trash out?
Well, you stir it up.
Best thing.
Stir it up, and then put it in the dumpsters, haul them out. Okay, this is all you get right here, and all, okay, now, fast forward. Keep on going, keep on going. Okay, stop right there. On my, back up a little bit, where the water stopped. Well, anyway, y'all seen the tank, where it comes out with the water? Now, my question is, on a, what's that thing called, Dennis? Where you stick it up to it to see how many gallons are going to the meat? Now, I notice, are we gonna have one of them to y'all to figure out how many gallons of water can you add to?
You'd have to have one.
Yeah, that's, that's part of the receiving station.
Okay, now, who's gonna monitor this?
Well, that goes back to where I say we'd have to have some staff hours. You know, because, again, you know, it's not one of those things you'd probably want somebody to self-regulate.
Okay, now, to clean, you know, this facility here, where mats and all that won't be growing in there, you know, when they, for a day or two when it gets hot. I mean, y'all got tanks and all, can pressure wash and clean this?
Yeah, water tanks, yes.
Okay, so that answers your question on the cleaning stuff. Now, you gonna be able to haul water? Well, what they can do is with concrete, like they did up there, they done the concrete thing. When they go to pressure wash this thing, the, anything that's on the machine goes right here, and then they can suck it back up with the trucks, as a clean.
If you serve meat and buy water supplies out of my data, then we got sewage right next to it.
Okay, how's it gonna get your, your, I don't know, thing?
We have well here, maybe we won't.
If you take a twenty-five...
Get to a...
We have well here.
Okay, well, what my thing is, if you scared with, you know, if you open it up to all pumpers now, you know, I would suggest, just try one, see how you like it, dump, shut it down, and get, you know, and see how that goes with the plant, and how it keeps clean, and, you know, stuff like that, you know? That would be a...
Anybody's got comment they want to throw here?
I just wanna, only I wanna say that I appreciate their concern, and then finding a living and a life with it. But I also appreciate the fact that it's just really hard for me to rest around the concept of getting the sewage in where I live.
Yeah, I appreciate you're very good too. That's why we're here discussing this.
Yeah, I mean, I live here as well. I mean, I don't wanna mess up anything. I want the sewer plant to work perfectly, because I don't want city sewer myself. I would never do anything to jeopardize my own, cut my own throat, you know? And this is my community also, so, I mean, I'm not gonna do something that, if it doesn't work, if you guys find, the council finds it's not a good fit, that's not a good fit. That's it. I'm not, I'm not gonna be upset, or be able, I don't wanna fight my neighbor over it, you know what I'm saying? I mean, in the end, I wanna, you know, I'm probably gonna provide a good service one day, you know, odds are.
I think it, I probably gonna need you.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's true, and I could honestly, I could sit here and name all family members that I've done work for, that you guys up there. Bobby and your father, and I know the lamb, and, you know, I just, there's everybody, you know? Everybody in the shop, we're gonna service it in the long haul, you're gonna need me. So, I mean, and I'm gonna need you guys too, so that's how it works.
Yeah, I asked, any others? Yes, sir.
And I think Felton was on something out there. So, when City of Canio started letting people dump in their facility, they had one dumper. They had one pumping company, Ray Sellers was the only person allowed in there for years. And then eventually, they, they looked in, so they already knew what it was gonna do to their facility. They knew what one guy dumped in there was gonna do. So, then they, they opened it up to another guy, and they let him start dumping it. And then they opened it up to another guy, and then they said, you know, they've got a list of haulers that haul in there, and they're collecting revenue, but they had, they had data to go on. So, I mean, I, very least, I would say, open it up to one person and see what it does to your plant. Because, Dennis, you said you can do three hundred eighty-five thousand gallons a day, correct?
Right.
So, at any given point, how many thousand gallons is sitting in your plant?
Uh, probably about a half million.
Right at a half million, so we're gonna dump two thousand gallons, and it's twenty-five percent higher ammonia. We're gonna dump two thousand gallons into that. So, what's two thousand gallons gonna do to a half a million gallons?
So, if you understood the process, that, what you don't want is what we call slug, and that's what two thousand gallons can be, it can be a slug. It's like, it's like pouring red dye into a blue tank, then red's gonna dissipate. But, to your point, that's why we'd wanna be able to trickle into the plant in the perfect world, so we could control it. We'd actually know what the ammonia or the pH concentration was. Because if, if we know the pH is too high, we can treat that pH before we put it into the waste stream. That, that's why the perfect world, and going back to the idea of using one provider, the only thing I would hope the council would do, if they're gonna go forward with that, is the same approach that we took twelve years ago. Make the expense, make it one time, and understand for the long haul. Because the idea that, or the expense that we experienced at the plant, what we've learned is, pay once, and never have to pay again, and maintain what you have. And we actually, in that particular plant, I'd like to tell you that everything's been perfect, been damn close, but actuators, how many times did y'all hear about actuators? Seven of them. And when we bought the actuators, it has nothing to do with treatment, but they're blasted valves that work automatically. Well, when they don't work automatically, you can't wait to get rid of them. And I bet Garnet can tell you that we had replaced seven of them at forty-eight thousand dollars, because, and he got tired of hearing me moan and groan about it. But we did it right, right? But, but point being was, we recognized that actuator wasn't gonna work, and forty-eight thousand, a lot of dollars to spend, wasn't a garnet. But we did it right, and we replaced it with the right actuators that came in. So, you know, the only thing I'd say is, I caution going in on the chief to understand if it works. We know what it would take to make it work, so if the expense is, we're gonna contract that service, or we're gonna take it upon ourselves, then let's understand what that would be. The other side of that would probably be the labor side, that will understand that.
I hear my question.
I know about six years ago, the dump had a chemical spill. And I went over, I came over there, the plant sucked out some kind of chemical, y'all had, the vats.
In the digester?
No, in the FEB. I take it back up top and put it back into the...
In the FEB. So, what happened with that is, is it wasn't actually a dump. We were actually trying to clean the bottoms off of all of it, because we were having trouble with one of the FEB pumps.
See, that's the thing about having a company nearby. That's what happened with Ray Sellers in Cornelia, they needed somebody that when they had a dump in the water line, and couldn't get in to work on it, he'd sit there and suck that water out of the way for the work. And that's what the talent just needs, is somebody that's handy, can come in and help them out, and then trade out of the dumpage or whatever.
Necessary evil, there's no doubt about that.
Yes, sir. Anybody else?
Just one, one more question, it's really directed to Dennis' personal knowledge. So, do you have to have two days' worth of capacity at the plant? So, if, if, let's just say that bugs die, you have to store that until you can get the oxydome?
Yeah, so it's a nightmare. You know, what we can, I mean, there's a number of things we can do. We can pull bugs out of the digester and, you know, rebate it. But the problem is, is that, you know, the difference between an activated sludge plant, there's a continuous flow. Ours is, we capture everything, you know, three hundred thousand gallons in one basin, and it goes into treatment right then, and an activated sludge plant, you can spin it all around the plant. We don't have that option. Yeah, that's the only one. I mean, that's the difference. And, you know, we can treat better than anybody, but you don't have, that's an option you lose. So, maybe we're a little more sensitive than that. But what you're talking about is reseeding the plant, we could reseed the plant out of the digester. But as long as your pH and everything's too high, which is generally where you're gonna start losing your bugs, that's gonna be, it's not gonna be your ammonia. I mean, everybody thinks that, because you can smell it, but it's not. It's the acid that comes along with the pH side of the equation. That's what kills your bugs up in the wrong food.
You, you said yourself, you can taste the pH of that strip.
Yes.
But there, before you dump, you're...
Yeah, that'd be a minimum, what we do.
Right.
Right. And like I said, y'all know it's haulers. You know if you pick up a bad load. I mean, you can tell. Somebody, I mean, there's people out there that hadn't pumped their septic system in twenty years. Probably longer than that, right? I mean, that's... And you guys know better than anybody.
We broke a mini shovel after Christmas.
Do we have anything else on this?
I just wanna say one thing on his comments about limiting it to one provider. I work in governmental purchasing, and yes, it's a great idea, but we, that would, this would fall in that realm, and limiting it to one provider would be in a very fine line about fucking with state law, so...
I'm not saying permanently, I mean, I'm saying safe for one year.
I got it, but it's still, it doesn't, it doesn't say in the state law that you can limit it for one year, so... It's an admirable request, but...
Don't pay competition what you're doing.
Yeah, I would hate to get into a situation where we do that, and then we have a state violation, and that takes away state revenue that comes to us. So, just so everybody's clear on what that might mean.
Having companies crack at that.
It's very difficult to get into a dump facility. I mean, I call every day to find new dump sites, because it's a challenge, like Dennis was saying.
We're, you know, we got the same issue on sludge.
Yeah, I call every night, and I'm telling you, even if they got capacity, they're not taking anybody. Yeah, it's because it, it's, it's a lot, and I would never expect you guys to, like, max out. You know, you got three hundred eighty-five thousand gallons, don't even get close to maxing out, because you're gonna need that capacity. We're, we're two subdivisions away from maxing that out, really. I mean, we're being close to it.
So, we know what our numbers are, so we, we're, when we get to sixty-eight percent capacity, you ought to be able to design engineering to build out the next addition, which that facility was built to expand, so that's the good news.
Sounds like we just had to span that thing, because we got growth coming this way.
Okay, I guess it's time to end this, isn't it? This, I guess, this man?
This has nothing related to this. Hi, most of you may remember me, I'm Kathy, the president for the Lula Beltway Historical Society. And I just wanna remind everybody, and everybody out here, that Saturday night is the Valentine's Day dinner. Tickets are for sale. We are accepting takeout orders also. So, give us a call by Wednesday, which is only two days away, so...
And I've got flyers up front, we're gonna go grab some real quick.
Dennis has some flyers, so, yeah, if anybody would like a flyer, we can get you that. It's on the Facebook page, I believe.
It's on our Facebook and on our, on our website.
Yes, and so... Yes, and so, just wanted to remind everybody about the dinner. And everybody's welcome.
What a shameful plug.
Something else, I have to speak in contact with more people, we need to find other ways, the same, not everybody's on Facebook, and not everybody looks out of their sights. It's only, we need to touch other people that don't have those accesses, the same, from kids, I like the issue, and it's about that, too. I mean, blackmail is one way, because they've got to get everyone's mail, I guess, and what may, but...
Another shameful plug for the buzz, though.
Yes, sir.
Is it after class on the board?
Yes.
I'd like to say, if you're in the shower at 10 o'clock at night, getting ready to go to bed, your husband is in the other bathroom doing his purpose, and all of a sudden it starts floating around your bed, who's it gonna call, and weren't they gonna take it?
Just, we don't have food prepared.
Okay, I'd like this one, finish this up, and I said we got it done, we're gonna go to the executive session, if somebody, they did it.
Might as well be on the executive session.
Most likely, I'm gonna have to have to say, don't have some, go into the executive session, so, y'all, y'all go home now, we're gonna work. Appreciate you for that job.
Thank you for coming.